Called the meeting of eleven Atlantic Ocean orders standing for flexible.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Commissioners Brashears. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner Fountain. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner McLean.
Yep.
Commissioner Angelford is excused, Vice Chair Garrett Kounarowski, and Chair Robertson.
Okay, does everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes from November? Is there any additions or corrections? In that end, we've got three guys presented. It's been a long time since we were together at all, so I can maybe do it in fashion. But we'll forego that. We have no city attorney tonight, so I'm going to toss the staff if you want to do their reading.
I don't, but I will. Okay, so tonight's hearing will be pursuant to the quasi judicial hearing procedure set forth in ORS 197.763 in Oregon law. At the commencement of the hearing, all commissioners, all commission members will be asked to announce any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. Ex parte contact is contact with any outside, anyone outside of the committee meeting or with property itself regarding the question or issue before the council. If you have any questions about either ex parte contact or conflict, please bring it up, and I'll be happy to try to walk you through it as best as I possibly can. We will start with the staff report by myself. After the report, we will allow for questions by, of staff by the planning commission. We will then have public testimony in the format as provided in the notice of action. The public testimony from the audience members or anyone on the call, which we don't currently have, may provide written oral testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. Please recognize that all testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria that is described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Please note that failure to raise an issue, including any constitutional issue or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to the record, sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, will preclude any appeal to the land use board of appeals. An issue which, an issue which may be the bias, whatever that is, for an appeal to Luba, the land use board of appeals, shall be raised no later than the close of the record at or following this evidentiary hearing. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city's decision, city decision makers and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Please state your name and address, and address when you testify, and we will go through the procedures where the applicant will go first, as it is their burden of proof. We will then open it up to any of the opponents of the application and then any rebuttal by the applicant if necessary. We will then close the public hearing with all discussion being held among the commission with, which has various options. With that, do any of the commissioners wish to have any disclose any ex parte contact, contact or conflict of interest? And now I know why he does this as a car salesman and goes through it really fast.
Okay, is there any questions about tonight's process? All right, seeing none, then we will move on to our public hearing. We have five elements to our public hearing tonight. We have planning file S dash two four dash zero one, administrative review dash two four dash zero one, variance dash two four dash oh two, dash oh three, and dash oh four. So because we have a lot of moving parts tonight, when you make your comments, if it's applicable, please identify what it is you're speaking to. So there's no misunderstanding amongst us. We know exactly what we're, what we're talking about. Okay? With that then, is there any ex parte contact or conflict of interest that we need to disclose? I will say that those of you, or all of you, I should say, got the documents in your emails, and there's quite a list of names on them. So assuming most of you knows at least one of those names, will that be an issue for anybody on the planning commission?
No.
No.
Okay. With that then, we will toss to staff for staff report.
Okay. So again, before you tonight is a proposed slew of applications. There's the administrative review subdivision and three separate variances. This is for a property that is located between Walker and Wausum and east of Stolt Hill Road. It is a 1.47 acre parcel, or two parcels that would then be combined as part of the subdivision application. The zoning is residential mixed density, and it is surrounded by property that is either zoned or designated in the comprehensive plan as residential mixed density as well. And land is either within the city or within the county, but maintains that residential mixed density designation. In terms of public utilities that are available in the area, in Walker Road, all public utilities are available and can be connected in the sites. On Wausum Street, public utilities are within the general vicinity. But as part of the development proposal, the public utilities would need to be extended to and through the western edge of the property boundary on Wausum Streets. In terms of the development, it's 1.47 acres. The site might look generally similar to you all. It was previously proposed for a 12 lot subdivision a few years ago for a very similar development proposal, which had a mix of zero lot line, single family residential and townhome mix. Now they're proposing a modification to a 19 lot subdivision, which is mainly a townhome subdivision with one lot, which would be a zero lot line, a single family home. The previous subdivision application was for a private street or a access easement, and this is again with a private street proposal. For the previous subdivision application, the maximum unit yield that was authorized, because zero lot line properties can have duplexes on them, was 20 dwelling units. The maximum dwelling unit yield associated with this development proposal is 19 units. So this is actually a lessening of density proposal for the application. There's just more lots associated with it. So this is very similar to the previous layout in terms of the private streets connects between Wausum and Walker. The lot sizes are smaller, but they are designated and designed for townhome developments that would be connected to each other on one side. So they are going to generally look like duplexes, but they're connected on one property line. And then there is the corner lot, lot 11, which is designated as the zero lot line, single family attached dwelling unit. Sorry, not attached, but single family dwelling unit. The properties over here on Walker Road are also designed for townhome development style and meet the lot size requirements for townhomes as well. In terms of access, like I said, there is a private street designation as required as a condition of approval. Each of the lots are designed to have a shared driveway between two of the lots. That is to make sure that the lots have a consolidated driveway to open up on street parking on the private road to maximize the amount of parking that is provided within the subdivision itself. And that is a condition of approval as part of the, the, the application proposal. And then on Walker Road, the two lots have the requirement to have a consolidated driveway as well as Walker Road is a minor arterial or collector road, it's a collector road, I think. And so due to the, the higher road standard, we wanted to make sure that the driveways are consolidated as much as possible. And that is a condition of approval as well. In terms of setback requirements, the proposal is for the lots themselves to maintain a 20 foot setback for front setbacks along the private streets. That is to provide a one car parking space for a driveway space and, and meet the front setback requirement. For the western edge properties, they would meet the regular 20 foot rear setback requirements. And then in between the townhomes, there would be side yard setbacks, although there is no technical setback requirement for townhomes. They are allowed to be connected on both property lines. But as designed and proposed, there would be a side yard for certain parts of it. For the zero lot line, single family home, you have the zero lot line, which would be this northern property line. And there is a 10 foot easement that is provided per code for access and, and maintenance purposes. There is a required setback for the front. And again, they're providing a 20 foot setback for parking purposes along the private streets. And there would be a 10 foot setback minimum provided along Walker Road to provide the minimum setback requirements to meet code there. And again, all other properties meet the required setbacks save for the two proposed properties on the eastern side of the private lane, the private streets. These two lots, lots 12 and 13, have been proposed to include a variance for a minor reduction in the rear setback. This would be about a 10% reduction from a 20 foot setback to an 18 foot setback for a rear foot, for a rear setback. And that's just to allow for a larger building envelope for a livable area and to provide the full 20 foot parking spot area up front. And the justification for the variance has been provided in the, the application packet and can be discussed further by the applicants. The other variance request is for the lot size for the zero lot line property. Per the development code, when you are on a corner lot, you have to add 500 square feet to the minimum lot size. That is generally so that you have, you can make sure that when you are on a corner lot, we have larger setback requirements. Usually you only have a, a single front yard setback when you're on an interior lot. When you're on a corner lot, you have two front yard setbacks basically. And so to be able to accommodate those and to accommodate a traditional style developments, we ensure that there is enough development envelope in that's lot size. Based off of the proposal and based off of what has been provided in the, the plat map, the applicant has been able to demonstrate how they can develop on the smaller lot without meeting that additional 500 square foot requirement, while also meeting the clear vision and sight distance triangles for safe travel purposes and making it a buildable lot without having that additional 500 square feet. And so they are requesting that variance addition. And that is only about a 5% reduction request in the, the lot size requirement. And then finally, for the final variance request that's being asked for, the municipal code and the transportation system plan identifies that on private streets, the maximum number of dwelling units that is authorized is 16. That is identified as, as a basis point. In this instance, because it is a collector road on Walker Road, our, I mean, our development code states that when you have a corner lot, if you have a lesser designated road, like a private street or a local road versus a collector road, then you shall orient your driveway and your access to that lesser road designation. And so our code is, is forcing the access to a specific point, which is artificially designating them to access off of the, the, the private street designation. And so that would minimize the number of units versus the, the actual amount that they could maximize on the, on, on the development if that designation wasn't there. And so they are asking for the amendment to allow for one dwelling unit above the maximum that's identified in the development code for private streets as well. In terms of parking, I did identify that each lot will have the 20 foot driveway space. There is also the designated garage space as per our code. Each dwelling unit is required to have two parking spaces for, for a townhome and a zero lot line. That meets the development code. And then we covered the easements for the zero lot line. Additional easements are provided for the private street, public utilities, storm drainage, and, and the lot as well, and that is covered in a lot more detail in the staff report. So that's the general development proposal. Prior to the hearing tonight, we did receive two public comments. One of them did provide quite a few signatures, as was identified. They are both letters of opposition. Please note that this is a general summary of the comments. This is not intended to be a, a statement of what the comments are. The letters have been provided to the planning commission ahead of time to be reviewed. They are in front of the commission for review as well. They're in front of the public for review and have also been provided to the applicant as well. But generally, the, the opposition is based off of density of the project, opposition to the variances, increase in traffic, low parking opportunities on Wausum, the amount of rear yard space associated with the developments, and lack of parking and safety concerns for the, the children that might live in the community. So I won't add voice to the, the, the comments other than the general, you know, topic points, but they're, they're available to you for review. And so other than that, I will conclude staff reports, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? My only question, we'll have public testimony shortly. My only question is the zero lot line detached house. I don't know that we've ever had one before. In fact, I wasn't even aware that we had provision for that.
We did, and actually, this exact property, the previous subdivision was approved for zero lot line subdivision.
Was I here?
You were here.
Can I plead insanity?
It is not a commonly used portion of our code. It is, I will be honest, it is a cumbersome portion of our code that is likely to need amendment, but the, the developer has identified a willingness to try to use it, so.
Are you talking about the corner lot?
Yeah, lot 11. It says, per section 16 dash oh five, or 0.05, 0.180, zero lot line dwelling is only permissible when adjacent to another zero lot line dwelling. So I'm assuming that you're interpreting the word adjacent, meaning the lots, not the dwellings.
Yeah, so townhome lots are also a form of zero lot line type housing and development. So within the subdivision itself, it is, it meets that requirement because it is adjacent to another zero lot line type development. Next door and across the street, it's not sitting on a zero lot line. And so what the code says is, if you have an existing subdivision and if you have an existing neighborhood, you can't all of a sudden apply the zero lot line type, lot line type, ugh, wow, I can't talk. Let's try this again. You can't apply that type of housing next to an existing type of neighborhood and say, I'm going to put this home right next to your backyard or right next to your side yard, right? And then expect you to give me an easement off of it. It has to fit within its own new subdivision area to where you're not impacting your next door neighbors, basically. And so the way that this is laid out, as you can see, the, the next door area observes the rear yard. The impacted zero lot line is adjacent to the next zero lot line within the subdivision itself. And, and that is, that next door is adjacent to another zero lot line property. And so it works that way. But it can't be next to a non-zero lot line property, basically.
The only other, I said, I said I only had one, didn't I? Actually, I have two.
That's okay.
Same lot, though. The access, is that off of Walker Road or off of private street?
It's off of the private street.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then with that, we will open our public testimony portion and invite the applicant or applicant's representative to come forward, sign in, state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Laura LaRocque with UDL Engineering, representing the applicant on this proposal. So as always, Kelly does such a great job, really doesn't leave me too much more to add to the proposal or the narrative of it, and, but I'll kind of recap some of the main points. As Kelly mentioned, there is an approved subdivision for this site. The approval is for a 12 lot subdivision. There's also approval for townhouse and zero lot line development. Maybe we'll take a moment just to just kind of describe those land uses because they are somewhat unique. So when we talk about townhomes, that just means that a dwelling is built at a property line. It's connected to another unit. Usually these units actually span, so the dwelling unit touches side property lines on both sides, and that's attached to another unit that's on its own lot. So what's proposed with this application, what's already proposed, is townhome development, which just means a series of units, one unit per lot that are attached to another dwelling. When we talk about zero lot line attached housing, it kind of gets a little bit more complicated. We're just talking about a single family dwelling, a single dwelling on a lot that's just attached or built at a property line. The difference between a townhome and a zero lot line, townhomes are usually connected to other units that are on their own lots. And the zero lot line attached just means that it's one single family home built right up to a property line instead of having a setback. So hopefully that clears up some of the confusion on these. But as Kelly mentioned, so the approval is actually for 12 lots that are existing. When you actually take a look at what the maximum density that could be constructed under the current approved 12 lot subdivision, because each of those lots can be developed with a duplex, it, it ends up being a net of 20 dwelling units that could be constructed. The proposal that is before you today is for a, a 19 lot subdivision. On this particular one, the dwelling units that are proposed are just a single unit. So there's actually a decrease in density for this proposal than the one that's already approved. As Kelly mentioned, there's a few variances that are included with this request. A lot of those variants just come down to the city's code is really geared towards limiting the number of driveway access to a street that has a higher traffic volume. So in this case, Walker is a high volume roadway. It's intended to move traffic through that roadway at a higher, more cars than average local street. On this particular one, you don't want a lot of backward movements into that because it just creates more traffic interactions in that case. So on this one, there's only one lot that's proposed access to Walker Road, and the rest would gain access off of a private drive. Hold my map so I can point out some numbers to you. So yeah, so in this case, it's lot 15 and 14 would have access to Walker Road. Their driveways would be combined. It means that both of those would be kind of centered over a property line, and each person would have their own access to a driveway and a parking stall in front of their own unit. The rest of the proposal, lots are to be accessed off the private driveway. Each of those lots would have their own driveway. The driveway space would allow for parking to be in front of a garage. So each of the dwellings would have essentially two parking space per lot that's being created. Because the driveways are consolidated, meaning that they're along a shared property line, there's spacing left over on the private street that'll allow for 19 additional parking spaces on the private drive. Both Walker and Wausum will be having roadway improvements along them. So currently, there is not room for on-street parking, but when this proposal is completed, there'll be additional spaces that could be provided on those streets as well. So essentially, the subdivision itself will create individual lots. Each lot will have space for two off-street parking spaces. And then there'll be a total of 19 additional overflow spaces that will be created as a result of the development. Most of the variants that are requested are just minor. There's a setback request for a two foot reduction, so bringing a required 20 foot rear setback to 18 feet. This is for the rear yards of lot 12 and 13. Those rear lots, lot 14, which is internal to the subdivision proposal. So these lots don't, about any of the neighboring parcels of land in that area. The reduction is kind of twofold. We could have these lots oriented in the opposite direction, but that would create driveway access to Walker Road. As a way to limit the number of driveway access to Walker, the lots were inverted, so that access could be provided off the private street. That creates the lot that are a little bit more narrow. When you add a 20 foot required front setback to have that driveway spacing in front of the dwelling and a 20 foot rear setback, it shrinks, shrinks the overall depth of that unit. And based on floor plans that are designed for this lot, it just gives a little bit more living space and quality to the residents that would be built if you would approve that two foot reduction to the rear setback. The other variances, Kelly mentioned, there is a minimum average lot size that must be met per lot that you're creating in a subdivision. On this particular one in Lebanon, has a code that says an additional 500 square feet needs to be added to each corner lot. Doesn't state the theory why, but typically that, the reasoning before that is that corner lots have two street frontages. Anytime you have a street frontage, you have to require 15 foot setback. So the theory behind the additional 500 square feet is that it allows for increased building envelope on a lot that would have more restrictive setbacks. On this particular one, because it is attached to a common property line, one of the side setbacks is no longer required because the dwelling's built right to a property line. So in this case, the setbacks that are imposed on both street frontages are not restricting the overall building envelope of that lot. One other kind of unique characteristic of this is that when you're calculating area for buildable space, the Lebanon Development Code deducts any sort of access easement area from your overall lot. So when you're trying to meet a particular standard, you have to deduct any sort of access with this on that. So on this particular one, you have a lot. It's just about meets the standard. But when you reduce it, because there is an easement for a private street, it takes you less than what would typically be permitted. On this particular one, the reasoning or the justification behind this is, again, the lot is oriented towards a private drive to reduce the number of accesses to Walker Street. On this particular one, we're demonstrating through sheet. On this particular one, we're demonstrating through sheet C06, that a dwelling unit of, dwelling unit can be constructed in the remaining building envelope of that site. So on this particular one, it's not constrained by any setbacks or any sort of items that would prohibit any sort of development on that by approving the lesser lot area. I think that's all that I wanted to present today, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and happy to address any of the comments that were received as well. Does the commission have any questions?
Questions for Laura?
Can I just clarify something really quick? Did you say that there was additional parking that would be created along that private drive as well? That would you, or is it two per unit at the dwelling, and then additional parking maybe on one side of that private drive? Is that what I?
There would be, yeah. So because the driveways for two lots are consolidated, there is a width area that allows parking to be on the private drive. There's also availability for parking on-street, on the public streets as well, once that roadway is improved.
So just to clarify, let's say, the middle lot there, the driveway, you would have a private driveway for both sides, correct? How many cars can you park on one side?
This one, I think it breaks down, I have the numbers written, of course, on another note, but I believe it's, there it is. Nine lots. Magic. Nine lots on the east side of the private street. There's seven on Walker Road, and then there'll be three that's created on Wassom.
So you can get how many cars in each driveway?
You can get?
Just on the driveway, not the street?
Yeah, so you'll have parking in a garage, which will be one vehicle space. You'll have a parking spot in front of that garage, so two spaces per lot. In addition to the, the parking that's provided on each lot, there's additional overflow parking on the private and public streets.
Yeah. One of the residents that commented, that sent in the letter, said that the garage would most likely be used for a storage unit. They're probably right about that. So we're looking at possibly one car in the driveway and then one car on the street. So two cars per home, per door.
Yeah, I mean, there's adequate parking on-site, and then there's some overflow as well.
Look at it through the common sense lens.
Yeah.
So on Lot 11, is there any reason why the access could not come off a Walker? Then that would negate the need for one variance?
The Development Code restricts access. So in this case, the Development Code says, when you have the ability to provide access from a different lesser road volume street, that needs to be provided. The answer to the question is, it should be constructed off the private street.
Okay. But theoretically, it could be done. Any other questions for Laura?
Yes. If, if you were not granted any waivers or variances, what would the developer do? Would he have to change his plat, app to accommodate that? Or what would happen if, if there were no variances or waivers granted?
Well, the developer has presented the best proposal that they have for the site. There's housing plans that are already designed to accommodate this sort of approval. If the application didn't move forward, there is always the previous approval that is still in existence. So in theory, they could proceed with this one if it's approved, or they could proceed with the one that's already approved years past.
With the one that was already approved in years past, were those, those were what types of, was it townhouses, or were they, it was a subdivision of single family?
Yeah, it was similar. So the uses for the, the sites were similar. Townhomes, a mix of townhome and zero lot line, some duplexes. But the overall net dwelling units would be more than what's proposed this evening.
Because you could build duplexes based on what is now approved as?
Yeah.
And in that case, it would actually be more potentially residences going up, or doors.
You would have more dwelling units, and then usually vehicle trips are based on the number of dwelling units. So your vehicle trip count would increase anytime your dwelling number increases. So the impacts would be greater as it's already approved than what's before you this evening.
Okay, any other, go ahead, Dawn.
Talking one dwelling unit, basically. Proposal that was?
Yeah, yeah.
You'll get a turn here in just a minute. So any other questions? Okay, thank you, Laura.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder to the commissioners, be sure that you speak into the mic so that we have a accurate record of the testimonies. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, then anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the application? Okay, if you'd come forward, sign in, state your name, please.
Already signed in.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Sandra Reagan, and I live at 970 Wassom Street here in Lebanon. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding the written testimony and the 49 signatures I provided to the Commission for review yesterday. I am here this evening representing my husband, myself, and my neighbors, who reviewed and added their signatures of agreement to the document I submitted. As stated in the written submission, we are a neighborhood that understands healthy growth. We know it's important, and that progress is inevitable. I wish to add, we are reasonable, we're community-minded individuals, and I would like to take this opportunity to expand on what we consider healthy growth. Healthy growth should benefit not only the city, the businesses, the builder, future residents that will live in the new homes created. It shall also benefit the residents already living in the areas of development. We want equal consideration, respect, and a voice in how new areas of development are designed. This makes for healthy growth and community unity, and we thank you for this opportunity. As the current residents in the neighborhood where the development structure is being considered, we welcome development that draws new neighbors to this area because it is attractive, friendly to individuals, families, children's, and pets. We value green grass, trees, space for children's and pets to play, individual privacy, acceptable noise levels. We want a neighborhood that does not have traffic flow issues like we are currently experiencing. We want those resolved, and definitely do not want further development here that worsens those problems and creates new ones for services such as the police, fire, schools, sanitation, and utilities. For these reasons, we oppose the approval of the proposed 19 lot subdivision and variances requested by Integrity Investments, and respectfully request the proposal be denied. Again, we thank you for this opportunity to give testimony face-to-face with you all. I would like to conclude by asking everybody on the Planning Commission one question. If this was your neighborhood, and this same proposal was submitted by Integrity Investments for Development in the middle of your neighborhood, possibly even immediately adjacent to your residents, what would your position be? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I think I only have one.
Yes, sir.
In looking at the development and the code, do you see anything specifically in the proposal that is contrary to our code?
What I see in the proposal, I don't see anything contrary to the code. I see the corner case that they spoke about with the 500 feet. Our concern is the original developer put in for the 12 lots. And we got our head around that, and we were okay with that. Now, they want to increase that to 19, and that's a big concern for us. They also mentioned that they actually could put more units on, on it as, as it's already been approved, but the previous approval had townhouses, not townhomes, and they were not connected. And when I'm, when we're looking at this proposal, it's a row of, row of townhouses, all connected. Does that answer your question?
It does. The situation that we're in as a planning commission, our responsibility is to review the proposals and make sure that they meet our code. We have almost no wiggle room as far as discretionary elements. So if, and that's why I asked the question, if you were seeing something, maybe we weren't. Because, and without, you know, polling the commissioners, we'll do that here shortly, but if the proposal meets the code, then we're duty-bound to move forward. So like I say, we have very little discretionary wiggle room.
I understand what you're saying to me. How does the current issues that we're having with traffic flow and traffic parking, and where does that come into play? Because approval going from a 12 lot to a 19 is in fact going to make these worse. And right now, on Wassom, they are a nightmare. People don't even allow their kids to play in the front yards anymore, and there's no place to park. It's, it's scary. And I don't understand how that couldn't have a bearing. As I said, we reviewed the 12 lot, and we made our peace with it. We do not want the addition of all those additional lots. And we were unaware that they could put a duplex on each of those. What we saw approved was a townhouse, not a townhome. A townhouse with individual lot, you know, individual buildings with areas around them, separation, which lends itself to quietness, the ability to be a good neighbor. I mean, if you're right on top of somebody playing music in your backyard that would normally be okay with some distance, can be really annoying. And we care about our neighborhood. We care about each other. We watch out for each other, we take care of each other, and we've built incredible friendships, and we welcome new people into our community, and would like to do the same with them.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to speak with you, one-on-one, about the 12 lot situation. So I think there's a little bit of a misconception that there would only have been 12 residences if that was the case.
Go ahead.
Very likely builders trying to maximize their profits and what have you, and I'm, I don't know for sure, I'm just speaking in general terms. Each of those lots would have ended up with a duplex on it. So essentially, you're going to end up with, I think we said 20, correct? 20 residences that would be?
Originally.
With the original plan. So in this case, each lot will only have one dwelling, so there will not be an increase over 20, there will only be 19. And how it's positioning itself to be able to have a home or a townhome on each lot, it creates a more affordable situation for homeowners to be able to purchase each of those individual dwellings potentially, instead of there being a duplex where potentially investors coming in, purchasing both sides, renting out one. And so just for perspective, you have a little bit more affordability in terms of people, people being able to purchase each individual dwelling, if that makes sense.
I understand.
So it's actually less, one less dwelling, but potential for homeownership in the long run, right?
Well, let me be clear that I'm understanding what you're saying, because when we looked at the original 12 lots, there was duplexes in the front. But then there was only a single residence, townhouse?
Right.
On each of the remaining lots, and that's what was approved. Now, are you saying to me that when he actually started to build, build, he could go in there and put in duplexes?
Yeah, so Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't approve the build plan. We just approve the partition and the plot, or whatever.
So as part of, if I may, the administrative review identifies that it's a zero lot line approval, which shows that you can meet the development code for buildable area on the lot, that you're going to be able to meet the standards, provide the parking and all of that kind of stuff. The Development Code itself authorizes for zero lot line properties, that it can be either a single dwelling or a duplex. And that is permitted outright, that is authorized per House Bill 2001 at, at state law requirements. And so if a subdivision shows that it's a zero lot line, or, or compliance with state law, that that lot allows for a duplex if it is so proposed. In the instance on a private street, where the private street has a maximum unit count, that is where we can minimize the amount of units that are authorized on it. And so that's where, although it's 12 lots, you cannot have a maximum of 24, you can only have a maximum of 20. So some of those lots would be single dwellings, but some of them could be duplexes, which is where you would get the maximum yield of 20. And that's, that's in compliance with state law, that, that is authorized as, as we have to. So although it, it shows that it is authorized to meet the requirements of a zero lot line dwelling type, per code requirements as listed within the dwell, the Development Code, it specifically states that zero lot line dwellings are authorized as either a single dwelling or a duplex. And so although it looks like it could just be 12 lots, that 12 lot can yield more than this smaller unit, whereas a townhome development specifically does not allow for duplexes on a townhome lot because it's too small of a lot. And so although it's more lots, you're yielding less. So that's kind of where we stand.
That is very interesting to me, because when we're presented with the documentation that the city provides us, and we see that what they're wanting approved only has single residences on all those lots, with, with the exception of the duplex, which we were aware of, we had no idea that that meant that he could come in and build duplexes. I also was under the impression that the previous approval was, wouldn't, wasn't, was no longer valid, and this was a whole new approval. And what I'm hearing you say is that's not correct. The original will stand, and whether this, and this could be approved in addition to that. That's what I think I'm hearing you say. Is that correct?
If I may, the, the subdivision is approved for three years before you have to do a final. So it's still within the time period in which that's authorized. So you could still act upon that, that original application. This would replace that. But if this doesn't happen, they can still move forward with that because it's still within the appropriate time period for that to occur. So that is still an acceptable and approved application. They can still do that development proposal. This would just be an exchange for that.
Can I pipe up? Sorry, I wasn't here for the previous approval, but I think, I mean, we can't say that the developer or whoever was seeking an approval was trying to, like, get one over on anybody. I think that the state dictates that the same lot sizes can be used in different ways. So he wanted to, or she, wanted to build the 12, and that's what their plan was, but the state says that they could, once it's approved, to build a certain type of dwelling, they could change it. And so that comes down from the state. That's not, does that make sense?
That is so sad and so unfortunate.
Yeah. Yeah.
It truly is. I mean, we love our community, and as I said, we welcome development, but we want it to be just as good for everybody, not just the developer being able to increase as much as he can and put as much money in his pocket as he can. You know, we're a community, and we really do want to be a community that's united. We really do. And I, there's nothing more I can add. But if there's anything you all can do, please stand for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing no movement, then we would give the applicant the opportunity for rebuttal if he so choose.
Thank you. Kelly, would you mind pulling up plans so I can refer to it on the screen? For C06 plan? Okay. So I think one thing that would help the conversation tonight might be to actually look at the townhouse zero lot line plan, and you might have that in your packet in front of you today.
Yes, I do.
Okay, great.
It's the last page, yeah.
Yeah. So if you take a look at that page, and it'll be in the agenda as well for folks that are in the audience, you can kind of get a visual for how the lots would be constructed. So if you start to look at these, you'll see that there's labels for townhouses. Now, for example, lots one and two would have, each lot would have one dwelling, but they would be attached at a common property line. So all intents and purposes, people don't see property lines from the street. So when you drive down the private street, if this were to be developed, you would see a series of what look like just essentially duplexes. So when we're looking at lots one through 11, it's not going to be a solid bank of development. These are going to be broken up and look like single-family homes, duplexes, all intents and purposes from the street.
So it would look like one, two, three, five buildings.
Yeah.
Instead of 20 or 19.
Yeah. So each one of these, for example, between lots two and three, and this kind of continues in a pattern, each of those have a five-foot setback or 10 feet between each building. So there would be some space between each of these, so you wouldn't have a solid bank. The only kind of solid bank that you would have are these lots 16 through 19, and that's where four units would be connected. But you can probably see from this plan, what's shown here is just buildable area. So you essentially just take the setbacks that are required, and you draw a line and say, this is your building footprint. So by no means are lots 16 through 19 going to be 90 feet deep. So they're going to be considerably less. They're going to have more open space, rear yard space area for the, for example, for those lots. So this kind of shows you what the intent is, is to make it more look like a duplex or infill development than a multifamily block building or a townhouse. So that might be a little bit confusing for folks that don't take a look at plans every day. And that was one of the reasons why we asked for variance for lot 11 for the lot size. Lots nine through 11 could be combined into a three-unit kind of configuration, where those are a bank of three different units that are attached. But we thought that the look of these, by having two units attached, just breaks up the size and scale of those for folks in this surrounding neighborhood. So that was kind of another thought process between asking for a variance to allow that to be a zero lot line instead of just a three-unit townhome on that side. Another thing that the spacing does between the two units is, again, it allows the driveways for each of these. So take a look at like maybe seven and eight. We don't show the driveway, but it'd be along that common driveway. But when you add a little bit of space on each side of those for the setback and then the distance to the other building, that's where you get those on-street parking, too. So by configuring the buildings in these, what look like duplexes blocks, it does allow for more on-street, private-street parking spaces to be provided. And I think that's all I wanted to just kind of add or clarify, unless the commission has additional questions after receiving the testimony.
Any further questions? Just one question for Ron. Do we have an idea, and nobody's ever asked you about it, but what the daily trips are for Walker and Wassom?
I do not have. I don't have any recent traffic counts for that, no. I can tell you've got plenty of capacity on Walker Road. I mean, you've got, it's full buildout. Yeah, there's a lot of traffic. This development is going to generate traffic. Every development generates traffic. Wassom, a little more narrow as it continues to build out, and you put curb gutter and sidewalk in, it'll have a different feel. And right now, it's county standard, right? So we can't condition them to build that out. If we could, we would, but we can't.
So I live off of Walker Road myself, and when they did that construction down there and added all of that, the traffic flow did change because traffic was being diverted down all the side roads, and it hasn't completely gone away because people now have discovered their shortcuts between Vaughn and, yeah. So we still do have quite a bit of traffic down there that wasn't there before. So I am kind of curious how that has played into the traffic on Wassom as well, and if it will continue to die down as people use Walker more and Stoltz Hill more. But there was a huge influx of traffic as people were diverted down those side roads. I'm kind of wondering if that's the Wassom traffic that you're experiencing down there, and if maybe it will start to die down a little bit, but.
It could be, but again, as the city grows, right? We've got these sections of county roads that are still county standard. We need to, as development occurs, I mean, if we had the money, obviously, we could go in and do that, you know, and make them a little wider and meet our standards, but it usually occurs during development, and it's a piecemeal, one little piece at a time. So yeah, you are going to feel the impacts of traffic. Is it to the point where your level of service is being affected? I would have to say no. I just, just based on our traffic patterns and volumes, I'd say no. Is it an impact? Yes, you're going to see it. Is it inconvenient? Yes.
Okay, anything else for Laura? Okay, thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
So that will conclude our public testimony portion of the hearing. All further discussion will be amongst planning commissioners and staff. Just observation, Kelly referred to, is it House Bill or Senate Bill 2001?
House Bill.
House Bill. I can never remember which one. House Bill 2001, and we all know what that is, and we've dealt with that for the last two or three years. But this project pretty much falls perfectly in line with what that is promoting. And although it's a changing environment, as far as housing is concerned, that's our responsibility is to accommodate to the best of our ability this type of mental housing. So for what it's worth, we may not like it, we may like it, but it really doesn't matter. This is what we're asked to do. So with that, is there any concerns, any more questions, any more further discussion? Let me go about it this way. Let me, let me ask some specific questions. There's the variance requested for the backyard setbacks. Are there any concerns about approving that variance of two-feet variance? Okay, seeing your head shaking, no. The variance of adding one more dwelling to the private street. 16 is allowed, 17 is being requested. Any concerns about that?
I don't think so, just because of the justification for why the variance is being requested to every traffic.
All right. And then the third one, what's the third one?
Lot size.
Lot size.
Sorry?
Lot size.
Lot size, that's right. The variance of the lot size, any concerns? That's the corner lot, lot 11. Okay. So any concerns about the project in and of itself, the subdivision, the 19 lots? Do you feel then that the application, including the variances, the administrative review and so forth, has met the criteria in the code?
Yeah.
Okay. It appears that we are in agreement. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Okay. I move the Planning Commission approved the proposed subdivision S-2401, administrative review AR-2401, and variance applications BAR-2402, 03, and 04, adopting the written findings contained in the staff report with the conditions of development and direct staff to draft an order of decision incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those then in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, thank you for your testimony and your time. Moving on to our next agenda item is citizen comments. If there's anybody with us tonight that wishes to address the Planning Commission on an item that is not on our agenda, this is the time that you would come forward. Seeing no movement, then we'll move on to commission business and comments.
Couple of things. I don't know if we're going to have a meeting next month. I'm going to say probably not, but I'll let you know. SB 1537, thought I would give you all a heads up because it's kind of poignant for tonight's conversation. This is a bill that is going through the legislature right now. It's proposed by the governor's office, and it's got steam. It's likely going to pass, and it's going to absolutely affect us. The part of the bill that I wanted to bring to your attention is the mandatory adjustments. So I know that variances are difficult sometimes. I know that they're items that we don't like to review unless our applicants, like we just had tonight, go through the due diligence of justifying their requests. But with the Senate bill that's going through, per the proposal, the developers would be able to request up to 10 distinct adjustments per project that they would be able to request, and they are mandatory adjustments. And so the city would have to honor them if they meet the density threshold for the city, which is any project that's over six dwelling units to the acre. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that we are coming into a new age that.
You give us some examples of?
I wrote them down. 10% reduction in side and rear setbacks, 25% reduction in open space. They just say parking minimums. They don't provide a percentage or amount in any case whatsoever. They just specifically say parking minimums that we have to provide. 10% reduction in lot size width or depth, and 10% increase in lot coverage are some of the examples that I was able to find in five minutes before you all started showing up. So these are some examples. It is going to be a new day, on top of us providing new lesser standards, reduced lot sizes, new concepts in our development code as part of our housing production strategy. So we start doing one thing, we're going to have to start allowing other things as part of the state, and more things are going to start topping on top of each other every single time the state gets into a legislative cycle. So we'll keep on top of it, but I thought I'd let you know that that's coming.
Can you tell them what the number is on that one again?
SB 1537. So it's going to be a different process that we're going to be all going through. I will keep you updated. The legislative cycles come into a close pretty quickly here, and I think the next two weeks, I think.
It's going to take effect probably the first of the year?
I think there are going to be some of these provisions that are in effect immediate, which might be the mandatory adjustments, and then there's some parts of the bills that are going to take effect in the coming months. But I imagine after we read through some of these bills that are coming down, I'll probably give you guys a brief review of everything that we're going through.
So if you own a big yard, cherish it?
Yeah, pretty much. And then we also have the start of the code updates that we are going to be working through for the implementation of the housing production strategy. We have consultants online, and we will probably start working on that, I'm guessing, March sometime. So there we go. Those are my updates.
I know everybody was holding their breath as far as the housing production strategy approval, and?
Hey, we have it approved as of February 2nd. It is approved. Dawn doesn't like how it was approved, but it was approved. Every city receives a letter, and every city receives a letter that says, you did great, but do better next time. So that's what our letter says. So we meet the standards. Our housing production strategy has been acknowledged, I think is the way that the LCD says. So we, yes, we received a wonderful compliment sandwich, and I am taking it, and I am appreciating it, and I am celebrating it, and I'm not letting Dawn get me down. It was a lot of work, and we are appreciating it, so.
I read the approval, and if you want an exercise in frustration, read that one.
It was a great letter that says that the plan is acknowledged and we're moving forward.
And it also says, we will let you go this time, but you better be better next time.
It's a plan that was acknowledged, and it's wonderful, and we're moving forward. Alicia left me, I'm a little busy. Alicia went to Albany. With Alicia going to Albany, her position is no longer going to be filled.
Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing, we are.